Do the fight of the United States of America and do the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good morning. Welcome to the Lincoln County Commission meeting of Tuesday, January 23, 2024. It's good to see everyone here in person, and we'd like to welcome those that might be viewing livestream and listening and so forth. I guess the first thing we have today in front of us is to, I need board action to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion removing number nine from the consent agenda for our consideration today. Thank you.
Okay, removing number nine of the consent agenda. All right, is there any?
A second.
Is there a second?
A second, Ed.
Okay, wave a motion in a second to remove number nine from the consent, to the, from the consent agenda. Call the roll.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes. I would now like a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any public input on the consent agenda? If not, move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A motion by Schmidt, second by Poppins, to approve the consent agenda. Kristin, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to our regular business, item number one. Toby, I guess that is yours.
Mr. Chair, I'll step down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Toby Brown, representing county planning. What's before you this morning is four separate ordinances. These were drafted by staff after recommendations from the ad hoc committee that was established by the Board of Commissioners. Again, the ad hoc committee was established by the Board of Commissioners to look in depth at carbon dioxide pipeline transport and storage facilities ordinances. That committee met a number of times, had some great discussions, had some great testimony. Out of that, really, staff kind of worked with the group to focus on kind of four main land use type concerns, those primarily being what types of definitions would we be using for this type of an ordinance? Second would be is what type of setback requirements would be utilized for the different types of uses? And then the third thing would be what zoning districts would these be allowed in? And then number four would be what zoning uses would be, would these encompass? And so I won't go specifically through each ordinance unless you want to speak specifically to them. I'll speak in generalities of them. The first ordinance before you would establish, we'll start with the permissive use one. So specifically, this ordinance would amend the zoning regulations for the unincorporated area of Lincoln County to incorporate definitions out of the CFR Code of Regulations. Again, these definitions are federal definitions, as well as the state of South Dakota through codified statute has adopted these definitions as well. These are the same definitions that would be through all four different types of ordinances. So specifically, this ordinance would again create a permissive use for carbon dioxide pipeline with a setback of 330 feet from a single-family dwelling, church, school, nursing home, hospital, business, public facility, public park, or consti- animal feeding operation. Since it is a permissive use, this would be a hard setback, so the only way that the setback could be waived is if the landowner specifically waived it through a waiver or a setback document. Setback from municipalities would be two miles or 10,560 feet. Same standards would be in the A1 agricultural district and the RC rec conservation district. And again, that would be a permissive use. Second ordinance specifically would be permitted special use. This particular ordinance, again, same definitions. This ordinance would look very specific to the ones that were submitted by citizens in the previous year, so it'd be a permit, or permitted special use of 330 feet, again, from those same types of setbacks, and 10,560 feet from a municipality. But, and this particular ordinance is a permitted special use, it could be flipped to a conditional use permit, and so the setbacks could be overridden by the planning commission through a conditional use permit. This would be in the A1 district as well as the RC rec conservation district. And then a third one would be, this would be a specific rezone, so the only planning, or the only zoning district that a carbon dioxide pipeline would be allowed in would be the I-1 light industrial district. So if there would be a pipeline or a production facility, it would have to be zoned I-1 light industrial. There would be no set standards for those because the rezone would, would, would be, you know, it's that part of the process wouldn't, would be a hurdle, I guess, you'd say, so we wouldn't have a setback within those. And then the fourth ordinance would really be a conditional use permit, non-standard conditional use permit. So again, same definition, same uses within the A1 and the RC. However, it would, would it be, it wouldn't have a setback standard, but it would require any type of application would have to be a conditional use heard before the planning commission. One other item that I failed to mention, those other three ordinances, is that as well as the committee suggested that we increase the notification requirements, so again, in Lincoln County for a conditional use permit, there's a 500-foot notification requirement, except for CAFOs and wind energy conversion systems, we would also add carbon dioxide production facility and carbon dioxide pipelines to that requirement. So I went through that really quickly with you, if you have any specific questions about those. I guess at this stage, as an agenda item, staff is requesting some feedback from the board. If the, if the Board of Commissioners wishes to proceed with these ordinances, they would remand them to the planning commission. The planning commission then would take up the ordinances out of public hearing and then give a recommendation back to the Board of Commissioners, which would be the appropriate step. Don't have any real recommendation on either one. I think all four ordinances gave you kind of a framework for what many types of different ordinances could be presented. So without having to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Questions by this commission for Toby? Toby, was there, was there any prioritization of any of these recommendations?
No, they just, they voted over the framework, general framework.
They voted consistently, just on the merits of each one?
They didn't, they didn't vote specifically on these ordinances, they voted on the framework for it, the setbacks, the land uses, the zoning districts. Yep.
And didn't we establish the, the procedure that this would go to planning and zoning for them to vet, and then planning and zoning come back and make a recommendation to the commission?
If you send it back.
Yes.
Yep. If you vote to send these, either for one or whatever ordinances you want to send back, yes.
Toby, were there discussions about any fee structure?
Not specifically, no.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions by this commission?
Okay, thank you.
At this stage, public input? I guess I will limit it to 30 minutes, 15 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents. So I guess, public input, let's begin with the proponents first. Okay, seeing none, we'll begin with the opponents, again, three minutes, and we will try to, like I said, limit it to 15 minutes. Okay, seeing none, I guess I would ask this commission, is anyone willing to make a motion or a recommendation? I know for, I guess a motion is what I'm looking for, as someone who is part of the committee to make the recommendation, and some of them are here today, I know that, I commend you, and I hope that this is something that we can keep moving.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to remand these ordinances to P&amp;Z with a specific request about looking at a fee structure for these permits.
We have a motion by Landin, is there a second? Commissioner, excuse me, I was, would you repeat the motion?
I would move to remand these ordinance drafts to P&amp;Z.
I'll second that motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second to move this back to planning and zoning and keeping this thing moving. I guess, any other discussion by the commission at this time? Seeing none, I guess call the roll. Kristin.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, item number two, board action. Again, I guess Commissioner Erns, this is yours, and I guess maybe I'll go ahead and let you explain it, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning and thanks, Mr. Chairman. My apologies for my tardiness this morning. I want to thank the commission for being willing to consider the resolution here this morning. Probably just requires a little bit of explanation, a little bit of background. In 2005, the, this county commission passed its comprehensive plan, and I don't know if any of the current commissioners, I mean myself and Commissioner Landin and Gibbon, were not on the commission at that time. I don't know if Commissioner Schmidt or Poppins was. But in 2005, this county commission came up with its comprehensive plan, and specifically, it developed a future land use map. And our county has been relying upon this plan that was developed. A lot of thought, effort, and input went into it, and more specifically, our citizens have been relying upon the future land use map we have here. In fact, it's because of decisions made back in 2005 that we see growth and development happening the way that it does. You know, for example, we've had a tremendous amount of growth and development out at the T-exit, and that's a result of the zoning decisions that this county made at the time. Furthermore, we've identified other areas of the county as being the most suitable for industrial land use. And why do I point out industrial land use? It's because a proposed prison site is most compatible with an industrial land use. I mean, clearly, the proposed prison is not compatible with residential housing, it's not compatible with agricultural land use, but it is compatible with industrial land use, specifically because those are the areas of the county where we think that other things, in addition to a potential prison, could grow up and develop. For example, you put a prison location in here in Lincoln County, and you're going to have other, you're going to have other development that wants to take advantage of the infrastructure that comes along with that. So for example, and what I'm hearing from the state and from some of these lawmakers right now, is that the prison is a $1.2 billion investment. That's a tremendous amount of money for the state of South Dakota. In fact, the $1 billion mark is the, is the mark in the entire state of South Dakota for development purposes. That's the largest amount of development there's been. There's a private development up by Lake Preston that's going to just about reach the $1 billion marker, and that's considered one of the largest dollar amounts for private investment in the entire state. So the reason I point that out is to explain that a $1.2 billion investment is very large and substantial when it comes to the state of South Dakota. Now, what we're hearing from the governor's office and the Department of Corrections is that the state, for the first time in 150 years, wants to put a $1.2 billion development in our county. Well, if you can't, you know, clearly, the powers that be have made a decision where they think that Lincoln County is the best place for this development. Well, we as a county commission, I think, have a duty and an obligation to collaborate with the state of South Dakota, and we have to say to ourselves, if the state is going to make a $1.2 billion investment, why don't we work with the state in a collaborative effort to try to drive that tremendous amount of investment to a location in this county where we believe that it's best suited? Now, we're not trying to, at least I'm not, derail the state's plan to build a prison or anything like that. I just want to make it a win-win situation, not only for the county, but for the state. Because if the state is going to build it, it needs to work for them because it's a state project, but it also needs to work for the county. And so you need to locate the prison in a location that's consistent with our comprehensive plan. And so, Mr. Chairman, what I'm doing today is I'm just submitting a resolution for this commission to consider, where we as a commission would express our sentiment, both to the governor, as well as to the Secretary of Corrections, where we encourage the state to build this huge prison in an industrial location as determined in 2005 by our comprehensive plan. So, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate there may be an abundance or diversity of thought on this commission with regard to this issue, but I do think it's important that we show some leadership here, that we don't just, the state argues that it may have the authority or power to just locate this where it wants to, but that doesn't mean that we just sit down and shut up and take it. What it means is that we collaborate constructively to try to drive that decision into the best location possible. So, Mr. Chairman, that's why I created this resolution for the commission's consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions by this commission for Commissioner Erns?
Commissioner Erns, are you driving this toward any one particular location or area?
Well, I am driving it towards where our comprehensive plan does identify it as being industrial in use. Now, that is a good question. In the last few days, I have caught wind that representatives of some land in an industrial area want to make their land available to the state of South Dakota. And I've told those people that I'm not going to weigh in on the particular merits of any one individual parcel, but what I certainly am going to do is make that public, and I am going to let people know that there are landowners now here in Lincoln County who want to offer up their land in an industrial area. But because of the potential that we may have to sit as judges in a conditional use permit hearing, that's if the court would agree to that, we, we can't take a position on any one particular parcel, but we as a county commission certainly can stand up for our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Any other questions for Commissioner Erns or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Joel, for continuously looking at this issue. The board has taken action in supporting, to some degree, a lawsuit that, in essence, what I believe the state should at a minimum have to abide by our comprehensive plan and our other zoning requirements. And that is still in action and in place, and I still support that the state in doing a, its due diligence with the county's guidance and support of trying to find and develop a logical place for them. I'm going to have difficulty supporting this motion today as it's written, but I do appreciate what you're trying to do in encouraging finding a better alternative. I do not think it is, though, our responsibility to do that, because in essence, then that automatically gives, I think, a predetermined approval for what they're doing, and I, I don't support that at this time. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Commissioner Erns? Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to tell you, my phone lit up this morning, asking where this new proposal was going to be, if I knew, and the only thing I've heard, it is along some land that is adjacent to the interstate, just north of where our transfer station is. And I understand, believe me, we all understand the situation and the emotion with it. So when you look at what that site said, that's about a mile from Worthing. And, you know, I think all the residents of Worthing would be shocked to find that this commission would, in essence, tacit say, well, we go along with this new site without contacting them. Lord knows, the state never contacted anybody, they didn't contact any of the landowners that are affected by this prison, and we've been, and you've all been diligently trying to get some voice in this thing. Now, don't shoot the messenger here, but yesterday, Commissioner Poppins and I met with the director of the DOT, Joel Junt, on a matter dealing with an interchange that the county is involved in. And during the course of that conversation, at our near the end of it, and Commissioner Poppins, you can validate this, Commissioner Junt asked us on where, how much, how much road development he would have to do on this new site. Okay, that's all I can tell you. I mean, that isn't divulging anything, he asked the question, which, in my mind, says that has the state made it all up? Are they done? Are they not going to move? Have they, is it over? Is it all done? And I'm not saying that you shouldn't try to affect anybody. We really can't contact anybody because there's a lawsuit going on, and there was no action taken yesterday by the judge, and I don't know when that will finally be done. So I, I will not support this as well. Not that I don't understand this thing, but I just think the timing right now is, is not right, and I don't want to have this commission go on record of, of supporting something that's going to affect a, a community like Worthing of 900 people. That I can't do. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner Schmidt. I feel like the intent here is good, certainly, but the industrial areas right now are all located closer to municipalities than the new proposed site, so for that reason, I can't support this as written. Because to me, the state is doing what they're doing to us, telling us where they're putting it, and by driving this without support of a municipality that has an industrial area, I can't support it today. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public input. Again, I'll allow 30 minutes, 15 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents. Each speaker, please try to limit yourself to three minutes. So I guess we'll start with the opponents first. Please state your name and address.
Don Claussen, 47174, 275th Street. I sent a letter to Kelly Wasco suggesting they locate it nearer to Rapid City, because I've been working at the penitentiary for 32 years, retired in 2011, and I saw people from Rapid City coming to visit, they could only come on weekends if they were working, and one woman was crying in the front lobby because she'd lost her purse. She'd withdrawn all her savings from the bank and had nothing to buy food, nothing to buy lodging, nothing to buy gas to go back home. I got a reply from the secretary that Kelly Wasco had received my letter and appreciated my input.
Thank you.
Mike Hoffman, Canton, South Dakota. We need some direction. I agree with Mr. Erns that we need to take a lead on this. It needs to go somewhere. We need to tell them that, yes, we've, you guys signed on and agreed to the lawsuit, but you're just saying, yes, you need to abide by our laws. No, participate with us. Get them to come with us. Here, this is how our process works, this is where you should be. I, I think, I disagree with the not supporting it. I agree 100% with you not supporting the specific location of X, Y, Z family ranch or farm. I agree with that, but of signing on and saying that it needs to be in an industrial area is 100% right. I believe you all can do that without signing on to the family farm or wherever this piece of property is. I think you can say, yes, this needs to be in an industrial area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Michelle Jensen, Canton, South Dakota. I'm a little confused, we're saying opponents, so, but we're getting up here and speaking for this, so I guess I would like to voice that, yes, I would be in favor of this resolution for much the similar reasons. I've been coming to these county commission meetings now for-
Okay, I will, Michelle, I will ask for, I will ask for proponents here, right?
Okay, so you, you want us to wait a minute?
Yes, okay. Any other opponents? That's, I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and I'll ask for proponents at this time. Go ahead, Michelle. Michelle, you're on board.
I should have just stayed up here. Okay, okay. So, I've been coming to these county commission meetings now for over a year, and I, I've watched, as I've been in the meetings, various different issues from, you know, event centers up around Lake Alvin and various different businesses and various different CAFOs and all of this, and it seems like the one common theme is this comprehensive plan. It seems like the, the ideas behind everything, the reasons you support or deny applications and permits, you rely heavily on this comprehensive plan. So I guess I'm a little confused why you could not support a resolution that asked for the state to follow this comprehensive plan. You know, I think that's, that's all that's saying, I think that's what the residents out there are saying, where it's going to completely change the rules that the rest of us have been following for how long? You know, we had to follow these rules, we looked at this comprehensive plan when we bought our property, we followed the rules for stuff we've done in our businesses up in Harrisburg, that's in Lincoln County. So I, I guess I'm a little bit confused, and I would ask for the support of this commission. All we're doing is asking to follow the rules that the rest of us have all been following. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Jeff Spikes, 27671, South Dakota Highway 11. Along with Michelle, I'm very confused with your guys' position today, especially you, Mr. Schmidt, saying that we can't propose to the state to put a prison in an industrial area. The town of Worthing is very, very aware that they're in an industrial area. They've seen our comprehensive plan, and we have not, Joel has not, proposed an exact location. We're asking, proposing, that you recommend to the state that it goes according to our comprehensive plan. By not supporting him today, you're telling the state, you can put it wherever you want. Why? You guys work for us, you're elected for us, and you're supposed to abide by our comprehensive plan. I'm going to say this bluntly, do your job. That's what we expect of you guys.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Linda Montgomery, February, South Dakota. I agree with your proposal, I'd like a vote to support that. What I read in the, I was not able to attend the hearing yesterday, but what I read in the paper this morning was absolutely disgusting, that the state feels that they can just come in and do whatever they want, and that they do not have to follow a plan, that you all have set an order. People here have been supporting and have been, you know, turned down because their property, property didn't follow the comprehensive plan. Please, stand for us. This is not, we're going to serve the queen. I'm sorry, it's not. That's what it's coming down to. We want you to stand for us. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else? I guess then I'll close, I guess, input from the, here in the building. So with that being said, I guess commissioners, to that point where I need a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move for the commission's consideration, approval of the resolution as drafted and handed out to the, each of the commissioners here this morning.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll offer the motion for, of second for discussion, although I still maintain, at this point, I cannot support the motion. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by Arons, a second by Poppins. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Poppins, thank you for allowing this to have a vote today. I think it's important. Thank you for that courtesy. Just a few things I want to say based upon what I heard this morning. You know, especially with regard to what Commissioner Schmidt was saying. Commissioner Schmidt, I appreciate you've taken the lead on meeting with Commissioner Junt, and that he's asking some questions about not only the 85th Street interchange, but also about any kind of improvements that would need to be made in the county for the possible prison site. I appreciate you and Commissioner Poppins doing that. With regard to some of these infrastructure issues, and that's something I really want to discuss, is there's gonna be a tremendous amount of infrastructure built to support a 1,500 prison bed, prison bed facility. And so if we're gonna build that, nobody in their wildest dreams ever thought that the intersection of, what is it, 278th and 477th? Is that what it is? Nobody ever thought that intersection in their wildest dreams would be where we would put not only a facility like this, but all the other potential growth and development that could grow up around it. We just never intended for that to happen. Now, I understand the state's argument about the fact that, you know, they argue they can just build it where they want to. Okay, fine. That may be, according to them, the outer limits of their powers and authorities. But really, when we're talking about public policymaking and making laws, we don't just do things because you can. You don't just exercise power for the, for the sake of exercising power. You develop good policy and good laws and ordinances here in South Dakota because it's what works for the public and it's what's in the best interest. Now, we can have an honest and good faith debate over what's in the best interest, but there is no debate. There can be no argument that the currently proposed site is the best location or the, or works with the comprehensive plan, or, or was what anybody would have ever dreamt was a good location to build a $1.2 billion facility. And so I think my point is, is look, there's gonna be more growth and development around this potential prison site. We ought to locate it, and this is my second point, in a site that's been zoned in, or, excuse me, contemplated or designated as a future land use of being industrial. I respect the people of Worthington, Worthing. This is not some kind of slight against them just because there's an industrial designation on the comprehensive plan next to them. I've been a part of the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. I've been in meetings where the people of Worthing are asking, or their designees have asked for growth and development to occur out there, okay? I've been in these meetings with these people. They, and they know that growth and development is going to come out there, and they also are asking for that growth and development to come out there. Now, I'm not suggesting the people Worthington, Worthing have asked for the prison, don't get me wrong, but I have been in these meetings where they're asking for commercial growth and development to occur. You know, there were a lot of discussions many years ago about Amazon wanting to locate down there, about CJ Foods wanting to locate down there. Those are very big, that, that's warehousing, that's potential manufacturing. Those are big, big businesses that there were serious discussions about those kinds of big investments and big facilities being located down there. So let's just put this to rest. Everybody, the comprehensive plan is well-read and well-known by city managers and city leaders. They know, and this is the map right here, it's all up and down the interstate, the commercial growth and development corridors. Everybody knows, they're on notice, that this kind of growth and development could occur. Now, I don't subscribe to the same kind of fatalism that maybe Commissioner Schmidt does, that people are just gonna say hell no in these areas, okay? These are discussions that need to happen, and I think we, as a county commission, have a duty to work in a collaborative way with the state of South Dakota to guide growth and development where it's gonna work best for everyone. And just putting it in the middle of a cornfield may, that may have been a very economic decision, but it probably wasn't a very just or well-thought-out decision. So I think we have to defend our comprehensive plan. And just lastly, Mr. Chairman, what I want to say is, this commission routinely will tell an individual citizen, you can't put an outhouse, you can't put an outbuilding, you can't put a garage in a certain place on your property. But then, when the state comes along and wants to put a $1.2 billion behemoth in the middle of a place it was never designed for, well, we just fall over them. We just fall over dead, and we say to ourselves, oh, my lord, we can't do anything about it. So we have no problem telling the little guy what to do, but then when the big guy, i.e. the state, comes along, well, then we just roll over for them. And I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't subscribe to that. And I do respect each of the commissioners' individual thoughts on this, and, and I appreciate where they're coming from. But at the same time, I just want to express where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion amongst this commission?
I just feel like, the way this is written, I mean, what about the municipal collaboration? We are, we, this resolution pushes this to the city. I mean, there's no city here today saying, pick me. So I feel like we're doing the exact same thing that the state is doing in passing, in proposing this resolution. We're cramming it down somebody's throat or trying to. And while I appreciate the intent behind this, because I do, it's just gonna lead to the exact same issue. If it gets pushed to an industrial district, does the city want it? I don't know. I mean, that's where I'm at, I guess. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Arons, you're very well spoken. I think that many of the things that you said, I mean, I agree with to a certain degree, using the idea that it's a, the gigantic figure that has been proposed, the one that I have always heard it was 701 million. Also, I want to share other things with you. I know that I'm not gonna be popular here, I'm not, you know, you can do what you want. But I talked to any number of state legislators this past weekend, and one of the questions that you ask is, you ask two questions from my vantage point. Are you guys gonna do something about a pipeline? Are you gonna, you know, what are you gonna do about a pipeline? That's, that's a big issue. Are you gonna, and what, what about the prison? And what you hear from them is, they feel this is over. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to burst a bubble, but I mean, these are, I'm not gonna name names, but they just said, well, why are you doing this? Because this is over. Don't shoot the messenger. Now, would I like to see someplace else personally? You asked me that question. Kelly asked me that question. Yeah. I'd probably be in the same spot you are, but I'm a judge sitting up here. I'm looking at realistic things. And if we look at this thing, while this is a very simple little document, it sends a strong message to that, that we are involving the commission in a, a state decision. Do I like to have that? Local control is going to be coming up here talking in a minute, but I still believe that if we're going to do this, as Commissioner Landin says, we're creating unintended consequences that we haven't thought about yet this morning. So, and I mean, I still am going to not support this measure.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, my thought on this is, we have a comprehensive plan. I think the state, as well as any individual or business that wants to come into our county, should abide by it. This resolution unfortunately gives a little bit too much support to approving something just because it goes into an industrial area. There's a lot of criteria that we actually, I, you know, to the state have not been presented with. I can't tell you right now if I'd wanna see this in an industrial area just because it's an industrial area, because I haven't seen what they've, are presenting, because it hasn't been presented, at least to myself. I don't know if Commissioner Arons has seen it, what, you know, what their infrastructure, what their sewer, what any of those things are. Until I see that, I can't say that, yep, I would love to see this in an industrial area. And that's what it comes down to, because I still believe by the existence of our comprehensive plan and our support of our actions over the years since the 2005 enactment of it, a state agency, state government shouldn't be excluded from having to follow the rules. Now, I've served as a county commissioner for enough years to know, unfortunately, we get the authority based on what the state legislature gives us, which is very little. We sit on a, as a jury on planning and zoning, or judge and jury on a planning and zoning only by the statute and power that they give us. They have got legislation and language out there that says the state can do whatever they want. So if we're frustrated with this, the people that we need to talk to is our legislators. And that's, on this eminent domain, all of these issues and powers that the state sets, that's where they get set at. We try to enact based on what the, the laws are written. So I believe we have as much power based on the fact that we have our comprehensive plan in effect. This resolution, I think, unfortunately, I feel, gives support to the state to put it into an industrial area, and I can't do that because I haven't seen what they're proposing. I do support what Joel is trying to do and bring an attention that, please, state, talk to us before you do this. Let's work this out, absolutely. But unfortunately, at this time, I cannot support it, Joel. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Our, our representatives, from Kevin Jensen and Jim Boland and, and-
Carla Lemms.
Carla Lemms and Ernie Otten and, and Herman Otten, and all of these people are in this, and I have not heard word one from any of them. And I know that all of- I, I'm, I haven't, I haven't, I don't know, maybe, Carla has put a resolution in. She come up. But I mean, what I'm saying is, have they, have they listened to your pleas? Have they listened to you? They're the ones that go to the state, they're the ones that are sitting in judgment right now.
They've listened far better than you have.
I am, I, I won't, I won't respond to that, sir. I have not heard from any of them on this issue. So although we have contacted them, but-
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, I guess we can-
Call the question, Mr. Chair.
Call the question? Kristen?
Commissioner Arons.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
No.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes. Motion failed.
Okay, item number three. Thank you. Board discussion and possible action regarding the partial disposition of county-owned and real estate. Steve, I guess that's yours.
So approximately three and a half years ago, we purchased about 155 acres in the city of T for a proposed justice center. And then before it was moved to its current site, here just outside of Canton, we have an offer just shy of 1.8 million for 44 acres at the north end of that 155 acres.
Can you repeat that again, the amount and the location for those-
Sure.
-that might have a question here in the audience?
Sure. So the parcel is number 240 dot 28 dot 76 dot 1,000, and it is the north 44 acres of the 155 acre site for that parcel.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Osmanson, has that been split out?
No, it's, the offer, it's, for the entire parcel right now, it has not been subdivided. So it's via exhibit as far as how they identified it. So I don't know if they can pull it up on-
That answer your question?
It does.
Any other questions here for Steve?
Thanks. We'll pull it up and show you. How do you really pull the offer up actually as well? So the total amount is 1,795,365, which makes, comes out to about 40,500 per acre. And on the exhibit, this shows you the-
Say that again, Steve.
I'm sorry.
Say that again. I didn't hear you.
Per acre, you didn't hear that?
Yeah, 40,500 per acre, and the offer is for 44.33 acres, according to this exhibit A, which is right here. So it's the north portion. There's an existing unrelated parcel in between at the northwest corner, and then the wetland area to the south, which is the approximately 110 acres, can be used for drainage for Nine Mile Creek, of which the county has a study on that as well.
Any other questions by this commission? All right. That being said, public input.
I just got one question. I thought surplus property had to come up for high bids. Just, just a question.
Steve, can you answer his question in regard to that? Or Drew can? Okay.
By statute, there's two methods that county can dispose of surplus property. One is by public auction, one is also through a broker, so it's to ensure that there's the highest bid to the county and to the, to the citizens. So those are the two methods that can be utilized.
Okay, thank you. Did everyone hear that? I don't know, some of you are shaking your head. Drew, you repeat that again. I know there's some people here that I think didn't hear that, and-
There are two methods that surplus property can be disposed of exclusively land, I guess. One would be through the public auction process, the other one would be through the broker process, and that's to ensure that the highest and best value for the property is insured for the county.
Okay, thank you. Any other public input? Okay, no other public input. Any questions by this commission? If not, do I have a motion? Mr. Chairman? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to partially dispose of the 44.33 acres that is noted in the exhibit here today.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion by Landin, a second, by Poppins. Any discussion?
I think it's a benefit to the county to get it back on the tax rule and at a, above what the purchase price was three and a half years ago, so. Plus, we retain the lower area for maintaining, controlling flooding along Nine Mile Creek. It's a win-win. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Poppins on the, get it back on the tax rule.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Poppins as well. This will be good for economic development. It'll be good for publicly owned land to be moved back into private hands so that we can have private economic development and private investment, and, and then start collecting some property taxes off of it, and hopefully they do some good things up there and tee with this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. That being said, go ahead. Let's call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I would just offer to Commissioner Poppins to thank you for shepherding this thing through. This was controversial when we first purchased this property, Commissioner Poppins, if you recall. And it was, I think we came out fairly well.
I agree. All right, that being said, item number four, board action to approve a resolution necessity to acquire real property necessity for opening and constructing highway. I know that's me. I've, go ahead, and I would like Drew to comment on that.
Morning, Commissioners. Again, this is being brought back in front of the commission based upon statute. I know there may be questions why this is being brought back when there was a tie vote last, be two weeks ago. Under statute, if the majority of the board is not present and there's a tie vote under 7, 8, 18, it needs to come back before the next meeting. Again, this is the resolution necessity that was previously voted on. I can't remember the exact date. Now, the property has been surveyed and designated H lots. The landowners gave permission for the survey to take place. So would ask your consideration for either approval or disapproval of this resolution and necessity.
Any questions for Mr. DeGroot by this commission?
Mr. DeGroot, there was some public comment made at the last meeting, and I've received some comments about this, about this issue of whether, when a county wants to use eminent domain to take land for a courthouse versus for a road. And here, you're creating a road to a courthouse. I assume state's attorney's position is this is acceptable according to the statute?
Yeah. And I was present when I think it was Mr. Montgomery had raised this issue. From a legal perspective, it would be for the purposes of the road and not the courthouse.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. DeGroot, it's also for utility easement, is that correct?
That's correct. I do believe that the city of Canton has given the opinion that the best route from a utilities perspective would be on that, through that land.
And I believe that was the most cost-effective route for the utilities?
Correct. A substantial cost savings, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other? All right, with that being said, I'll open it up for public comment. Those in favor first? I guess then the opponents, those disagreeing.
Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't really state that, the legalities of this thing. But I just want to read you the last paragraph. I mean, this whole statute is put in the resolution, except the last paragraph. The last paragraph says, "Nothing in this section may be construed as authorizing. County commissioners condemn public property for county courthouse or jail site until a majority of the voters of a county have voted in favor of the erection of a courthouse or jail." I mean, that's pretty black and white. Maybe, maybe we can skate by the law legally. Is it right? No. I wonder how many of you commissioners have had people come to you and supporting this idea of taking this man's land? Any of you? Have any of you come, I mean, you're supposed to be a representative of government. I think most of the people are against this. And so, in fact, I'm not sure there's anybody for it. So who are you representing? This is the third time I've brought this statute before you. And I, I've paid real close attention to this, the name changes from justice center to courthouse, however we conveniently want to use it. But the architect clearly stated, West Road, which is a road going north there, was adequate for entrance in and out of this place. Clearly stated that. I think it puts another fly in the mess here. When you're going to take this guy's land when you already have adequate access, as far as legalities. It was stated, you have adequate access. So why in the world do you think you need to take this guy's land? I'm kind of lost here. Is it some pride thing, or we said we're going to do it and we're going to do it? It makes no sense to me at all. I mean, if this place wasn't adequate to build on, maybe we shouldn't have bought it in the first place. I mean, you paid a price of $62,500 an acre for one section of 20 acres. That wasn't a big deal. 62.5, that's no problem. Maybe if they're offering 62.5 for the prison, there'd be a prison someplace else. I mean, when the county can afford it, the state surely ought to be able to afford it. I know, I'm just absolutely disgusted that you guys don't represent the people of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Dr. McKinney, Canton. It's my land you're trying to take. Not once did any of you reach out and touch to us, especially you, Mr. Gibbons. You're a representative for us. That's not very good. And we had two meetings with Poppins and Golden. They didn't last very long. They failed to negotiate. We didn't fail to negotiate, you people failed to negotiate with us.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Sandy Lundstrom. I live at 215 West Forest Street here in Canton. I am the mayor of the city of Canton. I'm here to thank you for all your hard work to ensure that the courthouse extension, expansion remains in Canton. We are appreciative of that. We support the Justice Center and we support the location you have chosen for this center. And as far as the 5th Street, or West Road, I'm going to let Paul say that.
Yeah. Paul Garbers, 1016 Angel Lane. Our jurisdiction stops at West Road, and we are well aware that we need to work with you guys as far as West Road, but that's where our jurisdiction stops. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. You know, it seems, I don't know, strange that right before we do this, you sell that land in tea. I know you, you know, I just found it funny. But I still don't approve taking someone's land. Scott read the last paragraph of that whole thing that you guys have been today presenting us with, that yes, we can take land. This is a project that you did not take to the people for a vote. And then, even with that, then you want to take someone's land. This is wrong. We, the people, I, one of the citizens of this county, do not agree with this amount of spending that I have not voted on, that I didn't get a chance to vote on building it, where it's at, and how much you're going to pay for it. And I certainly did not vote on, we can take other people's land, the citizens' land, for a driveway. I know utilities, fine. You said, you know, I mean, maybe you can get an easement. But, you know, a driveway? To take someone's land who they've had? Land is precious. It's a one thing we have. And you're going to take it? To me, this is just not right. And I oppose this.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I guess Commissioners?
Mr. Chair? I have a question.
Yes.
For the gentleman, sir, you mentioned the fact we failed to negotiate, and I'm not going to belabor that. But I have to ask this question, and maybe it's a totally stupid thing, but it wouldn't be the first thing that I've said that's stupid. Is negotiation still possible? I mean, I don't think, I don't think anybody wants to take anybody's land. I mean, really? Does it, do you think we don't?
Mr. Chairman, can he come up to the microphone, please?
Yes, please come up, Doug.
I'm just talking, so, this is serious business right now.
We had two meetings with Poppins and Golden. And I'll tell you right now, the very first meeting, the very first sentence out of Poppins' mouth was, if you don't sell us our land, we're going to use eminent domain. We have three people that's, who'd you say that, Mike?
Absolutely not.
Yes, we did.
I will argue that on a Bible, that never came out of my mouth.
There's three people here today that, who'd you say that?
Sir, can I ask you a question?
Well, hang on, hang on, sir. I'm just talking. Who said what, I don't care.
Yep.
All I want to know is, this commission doesn't want to get embroiled in that kind of stuff. Is it possible to still negotiate?
We'll talk to our lawyer and they have to get back to you. I mean, we wait a few people for how long?
Sir, what was the last amount that you offered for that property to the county?
Yeah.
I'm not going to say that out in public because everything you did was behind that closed door.
And that's okay.
Yep.
That's okay, sir. I don't...
And you're doing the exact same thing to us that the state is doing to these people over here with the pen.
Are negotiations still possible?
I said we have to talk to our lawyer.
When could you notify us if that's possible?
We'll talk to our lawyer and find out.
Could you do it within a week, two weeks, month?
Probably a couple of weeks.
Okay. All right.
I wasn't here prior. I can be in touch with your attorney and we can move forward discussions. I was not here prior.
We'll talk to our own...
No, I mean, yeah, and I know that. I'm just saying, please have him reach out to me and we can hopefully schedule something.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that we table this motion until we've heard back from the parties about whether further negotiations are possible.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion? Can, do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, I don't think people have finished...
Okay, you're right. Excuse me. Okay, go ahead.
Ernest Rottmeyer, Worthy. Do you not have access for utilities in a driveway from the West Street? That's a question. Just answer yes or no. Don't do all this BS stories. Do you not have access without stealing his property? If you have access, then why are you trying to steal his property? And why did you buy that property? Why did you buy it? Why did you make an agreement to buy it if you didn't have access? And from my understanding, unless I'm wrong, you have access and you can access it from the east, from that street, and you can take utilities there, and you can service your area. And if that's the case, then I don't believe that anything you're doing here to try to steal his property is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We're not stealing anybody's property. We're not doing that. I understand, I'm not going to argue with you publicly, but I just want to put this down. You've got to remember, there's 70,000 people in this county. They don't just live here. They live up north. There's $54 million of taxpayer money that's going to be built in the thing that's going to last in this county for 30, 40, 50, 70, I don't know how many years, but years to come. And do you really, really want to put that off of a township gravel road? Should you put, should you put that? I'm not taking, I'm not stealing anything. I'm just trying to say, this is going to be a footprint and a legacy for us, for the future. And I'm sorry that this thing got fouled up, and that's why when we're done with this discussion, I'm going to move to wait to hear from the landowner to see if negotiations are possible.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Okay.
And I don't know if anybody can help answer this. I know we've got the mayor and one of the city councilors here. I keep hearing the term township road thrown around. Is, so as I understand it, from Highway 18 going north, the road is paved, correct?
Correct.
Blacktop. Township owns the west half, city owns the east.
Go ahead and come up and speak at the mic and...
I just want to make sure we...
Can you sit down?
I just want to make sure we've got a common set of facts that we're operating off of here.
West Road going either south or north of 18. Right now, the township owns the west half of that road and the city owns the east half.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's paved blacktop going from Highway 18 past the, where the current driveway is, right?
Correct.
So there's no gravel, the gravel road starts after further north, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just, I keep hearing the term township gravel road. I mean, there's township gravel roads where this new prison is going to be, for crying out loud. I mean, I just want to know, is it a paved road or is it gravel road? Right? Yeah. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Melissa Carlson, 277-27480th Avenue. I don't know all the details of the driveway permit, but it seems, my understanding is that there is other access available, and this, this route probably doesn't make sense. But a point I wanted to make is this seems like it's going to be a waterfall effect and, you know, regarding the prison, that once we start talking about roads and access to the prison, that you're probably going to be doing the same thing to a lot of different landowners, taking their land, you know, we'll have to go through permits, figure out how they're going to get access to the prison in the middle of nowhere on all gravel roads out there. So I just wanted to, you know, have you think about this to future, you know, approvals, that this may be a waterfall effect, and it doesn't, it doesn't seem like a good deal to me.
Okay, thank you. I guess we can go ahead and move on here. We do have a motion on the table.
Motion to table this until we have heard back from the landowner if further negotiations are possible.
Cool.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make some comments, too.
Okay, discussion?
Power to take land is very powerful. It is allowed. It's allowed under both the U.S. Constitution, South Dakota Constitution. You have to offer just compensation. There's also some statutes that further clarify how that process is supposed to work. Incredible deference is given by our courts once a county commission passes certificate of necessity, meaning that unless there's fraud, abuse, or bad faith, it's going to happen. So the power rests with the five folks up at here as elected officials to make the decision. Because you aren't going to overturn it in court. And I don't think anything, you're going to prove any bad faith, fraud, or abuse here. I think each of the commissioners takes it pretty seriously. But here we are, pulling the same stunt that the state of South Dakota wants to pull with this prison. We're sitting here just wanting to take the land. And I get it. Let's not be melodramatic about it either, though. It's a driveway intended for the purpose of the public to be able to access the new courthouse. I get that part. It's fine. On the surface, it sounds like a very harmless, benign issue. Okay? You create a nice driveway coming off of Highway 18 to connect the citizens to their new courthouse. I get that. There probably is even an argument made that for safety and security purposes, you probably even need two driveways. You know, that's my guess, when you're talking about a public facility like this. There already is one driveway access. It is not a township gravel road. It is off of a paved road. Now, whether that paved road or not would be sufficient to handle the, the level of traffic that we expect in and out of the courthouse, I don't know. That's really not my issue today. My issue today is whether it's appropriate to use eminent domain to take this, the McKinney's land. That's the big issue for me today that I'm concerned about. And what I'm, and I appreciate, I respectfully disagree with state's attorney's office. I appreciate all their work on this, though. But we wouldn't be building that driveway for a road unless the courthouse was going to be there. So in my mind, according to that statute, we're taking it for a court... So in my mind, according to that statute, we're taking it for a courthouse. I mean, yes, we're not going to physically build the courthouse on the driveway. But the only reason we're building the driveway is because of the courthouse. It's an extension of the two. I mean, but for the building of the courthouse, we would not be taking the driveway. It's not as if we're creating a new road. You know, like we're going to take a farmer's, uh, cut a path through a farmer's section of land so that we can get to a recreational area at the river, for example. Be a perfectly legitimate use eminent domain, I think. In this instance, we're only building the driveway because of the courthouse. And so I think in this instance, we have to trust the judgment of the voters. And I know a lot of elected officials just despise wanting to put decisions in the hands of voters because they don't trust people. But I think in this instance, the statute, to me, the way that I read it is very clear, is that when it's for the purpose of a courthouse, you just have to put it into the hands of the voters and let them make the decision. I know that the conven- again, it's a convenient economical shortcut that the county commission can take, just like the state wanted to make a very convenient economical decision to take some land that they had already owned. It's just government replicating one disaster and one mistake right after another. Don't get me wrong. I have no ill will, I, I take no issue with fellow county commissioners who want to put the driveway there. Like I said, my argument isn't the driveway. My argument is the exercise of government power. That is the theme, apparently, of today's commission meeting, uh, in many different avenues. And so that's my issue. I, I don't think these people, uh, fellow commissioners are wrong for wanting to have a driveway off Highway eighteen. I mean, that's not a big deal. The, the bigger deal is using the power of government, uh, against an average citizen. And, and in this instance, I think there's a statute there that protects those people. So for those reasons, I, I can't support the ultimate issue of taking the land. But, um, I, like Commissioner Schmidt, think that there is some, there's more negotiating to be had. The courthouse, it's going to be another, what, twelve to eighteen months? We have plenty of time before we need to acquire the land. I appreciate what Commissioner Poppins did and what our former State's Attorney did, Mr. Golden, of trying to negotiate a resolution. I just think it'd be important to do a little more talking, a little more collaboration, um, between the county and, uh, and the landowners, uh, to try to get this thing figured out uh, before we, before we proceed with such a drastic, uh, measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask, um, counsel question, if you could come up? I feel like we already voted on this once, and I know I wasn't at the last meeting because I was stranded in Kansas, but, didn't we already vote on this? And wasn't that vote unanimous?
It was, uh, I don't believe Commissioner Aaron's was present during that, uh, meeting. It was a four oh vote, uh, and like I said, this resolution was to clean up the fact that, uh, it has now been surveyed and designated to H lots.
So we're just one further step in that process. So we've delayed it now for two weeks. We're going to delay it some more if we table this. So I'm not, I'm not on board with tabling this, this project needs to move forward. We have contractors that are waiting to do bid packages on this courthouse, and these decisions need to be made. So I'm asking this commission to approve what you've already approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Landine, I, uh, probably would have last week, but I didn't realize from, we have a landowner here. And I cannot, I cannot say why we would not take, and if we've spent all this time already, why we wouldn't take an additional two or three weeks to find out whether there was negotiations, which would settle a lot of stuff. I mean, we wouldn't be, uh, we, we wouldn't rupture our community and trying to say, "Did, did you take the land? Did you not take the land? Why didn't you spend the extra time talking?" I just think that, uh, when you, when you, when you don't talk, you can't communicate. And maybe we can find a way to communicate and get this thing resolved without this. And if that means to take additional time, I don't have a problem with that. And I really would like to have us, uh, table this until we can get that resolved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um, my comments will be this. This action has already been taken. This is a clarity motion, uh, exactly what is, uh, what is needed for the courthouse. This by no means prevents any discussion with the property owner moving forward. Uh, until the date of the court, even to the date of the court hearing, you can still negotiate, absolutely. But in, in response to Commissioner Landine, this process for the courthouse is in motion. And some clarity has to be defined as to exactly, um, how that approach is going to be for the new courthouse. Uh, I will tell you that in trying to find a spot in Canton or the vicinity of Canton to build this courthouse is not an easy, has not been, nor would it be an easy task. Nor would I have supported this site if some means was not access to Highway eighteen. Because I do believe, do not believe that this is a, an adequate site without that access. So if there's a, a decision not to do an access to Highway eighteen, I would say we need to go back to the drawing board and start the process over. And I will tell you that trying to find a willing seller in Canton for adequate site, good luck, and I, I have, I've taken my time and I will not participate in that. I caught, uh, a, a, a lot of no's, very few yeses. And the yeses always had even more stipulations on it. So I would encourage anybody else, if they've got a site, uh, we've got representatives from the city of Canton. If they have alternatives, uh, more power to it. But, uh, Mr. Nelson and myself, um, and other people scoured the, uh, the property logs of, of in and around Canton. Trying to find a spot is not easy. The property that we just accepted an offer on was a parcel that was for sale. Trying to find a willing buyer and a willing seller for a governmental property such as this is rare in a community like this because not a large parcels that are, uh, have the ability to have infrastructure either currently on it or brought to it exists. So I do not support delaying it. This is simply a clarity motion for something we've already taken. And it does not prevent, and I encourage, uh, if Mr. McKinney's would rather negotiate with somebody else, gladly step down in that negotiation and have somebody else try to reach to, uh, come to an agreement on that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask you to call the question on delaying this, uh, issue until we can find out or that further negotiations are possible. I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, we had a-
Yep.
-motion by Schmidt and a second by Aaron's, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. The motion?
Carried.
Carried, it's tabled.
Okay, is tabled, correct. All right, moving on, item number-
And when are, and when are we going to bring that back on, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When will we be bringing that motion back on for hearing?
My understanding-
Well, I don't know, I, if we have a two, two a weeks or a week or so, can we, can we look at that by that time, Mr. McKinney?
We have a-
Okay.
Meeting in two-
Like, uh, next week?
Two weeks?
Uh, two weeks. Okay, two weeks.
Two weeks, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Floyd?
If I may-
Or, excuse me.
If, because that was tabled, you'll have to have a motion to take it off the table in the future. So you can't set a definitive date at this time, so there'll have to be a motion to take it off the table.
Okay. Okay. So do we need that motion now, Drew, or in the future?
In the future.
In the future, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm asking that that be put on the next agenda for next week.
Yes, it will be, that'll be in two weeks from today.
Thank you.
All right. On number five, Highway Shop, I believe Terry's here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Terry Floyd, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. We've been working with, uh, Brad Dietzenbach, um, with Vanderwall Architect, on, uh, getting some office space drawn up out at the, uh, the Highway Shop. And, um, I have him here this morning to, for a presentation. And I'll let him come up here and, uh, present this.
Everything should be right there, you just have to scroll down.
Sounds good. Good morning.
Morning.
What you have before you is basically a program summary of existing and what the proposed would be for the office addition. It was brought to my attention, we need to accommodate some growth needs of their staff in the near future here, and by doing that, take into account future growth. So, running through this briefly, the existing office space is seven hundred and five square feet reception area with one bathroom and two offices. We are proposing two bids on the expansion and remodel, one being a base bid, which would accommodate their needs plus. And that base bid would increase the square footage to two thousand three hundred twenty-six square feet with reception area, a work area for the reception person, two bathrooms, three offices, an open office space that would accommodate four workstations and a conference room and a storage room. The base bid estimate for that would be three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The alternate bid would increase the square footage to two thousand five hundred fifty-nine square feet. It would then, we would be adding to that s- a larger open office area, which would accommodate six workstations instead of four, otherwise everything else is pretty much the same as the base bid. And that would be an estimated cost of four hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two approximately. Construction of the addition would replicate the existing construction means and methods that are out there right now. And briefly, can I zoom out of this a little bit? So here's the existing staff space that you currently have with the two offices. And here is the base bid. These areas would remain as is, the existing office would get reconfigured by adding another bathroom, recreating the reception area with a work area so that it functions better. We would add a conference room, three private offices, an open office area for four additional employees for workstations, and then a storage area in the middle, all linked together with the existing building. The alternate option, we are basically increasing the open office space from four to six workstations here. I would anticipate if we move forward with this, it'd be out, be going out to bid in March, sometime in March, and, uh, construction's starting in April, weather pending. And I would anticipate, based off experience, you're looking at maybe six months construction completion and move in. So I'd put it somewheres in, towards the fall, early fall.
Any questions at this time for the presenter and?
Terry, is there any, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Other than the two additional seats, is there any other advantage, uh, access connecting the existing building, um, of doing that? Due to adding the two, uh, extra space?
Right, can you explain that a little bit?
Well, is there, I don't see any additional entrances or access points that are created to-
To the external?
To the existing.
No. So basically-
So it's strictly two additional?
So basically, this year, right now, if you look up on the screen up there,
Yeah.
This is that north west bill where you come in.
Yep.
So basically, you're going to be coming in that entrance, and then we'll be taking and cutting out a wall, which is, this here is the main wall right now. And that's how we would access this part. So we'll have a doorway here coming around, and then there would be another doorway that goes directly into the training break room that is there. But all, there would be no exterior office entrances from this addition. Everything will still be on the main, the main building.
So the exterior matches it, it's metal, or?
Yes.
Yeah, we would use the same materials, uh, scroll down here. So essentially, it would be the same metal panel materials to match the existing.
Can you go back up to the layout, please?
I was just going to ask the same question, yeah.
Uh, just, there's no emergency exit or anything created in there?
Not required by code, you have enough emergency exits, you got travel distance, you have a sprinkler system, so there's nothing by code that requires you to add another egress door with this addition.
Any other questions for the presenters here?
Terry, who's going to occupy those offices, besides yourself, of course?
So, so currently, um, this big one, of course, is the big conference room. Uh, the one office will be highway superintendent. The other office will be assistant highway superintendent, and in the third office space will be the, uh, county engineer. Uh, once we get that, we start recruiting for that and hopefully higher position. And then, and then the open workspaces, uh, again, um, for that, one of those, one of those desks is going to be taken right away by the operations supervisor. That's where his office will be. And if, and in the future, this'll, this'll accommodate growth. If we want to get some, uh, some, uh, engineer tech specialists coming in, we could have, we would have additional office space for them as well, surveyors, land surveyors, or whatnot.
And then you've got an assistant that's going to be in that, uh, blue area there?
Yes, yeah, so this here, so right now, she is currently over here. And then that space is going to be moved over here to this corner. And then, so basically, this is an existing restroom here, and then we're going to add another one just to the north of that, um, in there.
Terry, help me by, uh, giving me the two estimated, uh, costs again, I got four thirty-one for the, uh, option two, what was the, uh, original?
Three eighty-five.
Three eighty-five.
And this is, this is a budgeted item, this is in my budget for, for twenty twenty-four. I have, uh, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars allocated for this project.
And you're not asking us today to choose, you're just going to put it out with the alternate bid package?
Yeah, so basically, what I'm looking for is permission to move ahead. Grant us a permission to move ahead, get plans done, and then go to bid with this project. And again, I'm talking with Brad here, I think what we'll end up doing is, we'll have a base bid, um, for, for the, the, the first part. And then we'll do an alternate bid on the second to see what it comes in at, um, to see if it's maybe a little cheaper. Um, and if it comes in cheap enough, maybe we can do the other, the additional part as well. But worst-case scenario, um, we'd get the base bid on it, or the base part of the project.
I'd be very curious, footstomp, if we can get an alternative bid to come in at four twenty-five, right?
It may, it'd be close, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but you, you don't, I don't know, nowadays, you don't know.
I don't-
It's very question, so.
That's right.
Terry, good luck with it, I'm sure Mr. Chairman's going to ask for public comment, but I didn't get any, anybody calling me on this as opposed to the number of people that called me on how many, where we're going to, when we're going to move the co- uh, county seat, that's my comments from the previous week, so hopefully the bids come in, uh, come in okay, so.
Okay, any other questions? All right. That being said, um, public comment this time? Okay, seeing none, I guess, um, are you looking for a motion to move ahead, is that it, Terry, at this particular time?
He wants to put it out to bid, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
Advertiser.
Yeah, so, so I'm looking for action, board action to, uh, to move forward with, uh, the engineering, the architect work on this, getting plans together and then going to bid, um, in two months, month and a half, two months, probably.
I would offer that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Smith, a second by Landine. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, you have any public comment?
Yes, public comment? Well, we did, didn't we?
Did we?
Yeah, we did.
Was there was, all right, thank you.
Okay, that being said-
Nobody jumping on this one.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, next item I have, uh, is board action to award the twenty twenty-four rural access infrastructure funding, or Rafe Grants to Townships. I, I have a document attached here. So this year, we received, uh, nine, uh, grant applications, uh, from townships. Again, if you look on the, it's in the packet, the green ones are the ones we're going to award. So we'll be awarding one to, uh, Kristen, do you want me to go through all the numbers on these, of these structure numbers for these awards?
Yeah, I don't have them.
Okay. You want?
Yeah, if you have them, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, this is our recommendation that came out of the committee that reviewed these applications. First one is going to be Highland Township, structure 42-1497-2080. Requested money is $32,000. Next structure is going to be Canton Township, structure 42-1589-1417. Requested funding is $206,489. The next grant will be Delaware Township for structure 42-0557-2178. And that's an engineering grant for $12,000. The next one is Dayton Township for structure 42-1588-0903 for $176,288. The next one is Pleasant Township for structure 42-0601-2589. That's an engineering grant for $12,800. And the last one is Pleasant Township for structure 42-0700-2795. And that is a replacement grant for $11,844. Again, these are, these are structures, these are recommendations from the review committee of applications for this year, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on any of these?
How many townships, Terry, apply?
So, I'll go back to last year. Last year, we had eight townships that submitted five-year plans. And all eight of those townships were granted a, some sort of grant last year. So, this year, I had four of those eight townships applied and, or submitted five-year plans, and two new ones submitted five-year plans. So, the new ones, so total for this year, we have six townships that submitted five-year plans and applications for this year. So, the new ones from this year are Delaware Township and Pleasant Township. They were, they were the newcomers this year. And just to refresh you, I don't know how many of you are aware, but with this RAFE funding, the townships have to submit a five-year plan by the end of August, I believe it is, every year. And if they don't submit a five-year plan, then they are not eligible for grant funding.
So just 10 so far of our townships have submitted any plan at all?
Yes.
Now, the pay on this is 80/20, correct?
Yes. And then these, and these awards are 80% of the total cost of those projects, so.
Terry, do you want to just mention, a lot of times people wonder, what does that stand for, Rural Access Infrastructure Funding? You want to tell them what that is, where that money comes from for us?
So, I believe it was, is it 20, 20 or 21, state legislature set aside funding to assist townships with large structures that are over five feet, six feet, I believe, 60 inches, I believe, I think is what it is. And that was through H. House Bill 1259. The first year was designated, they had $3 million set aside statewide for all townships to reinventory all their large structures and then get it into mapping. And again, Lincoln County, we did that. I had an individual go out. We, we went and looked at all the township structures, and we put them into the system for the DOT. And I think a year, a year or two after that, state legislature opted to put more money into this program. So, so that was $25 million that they, they set aside statewide over three years. So, we've had two years of that paid out so far. We get roughly, I don't know, $350,000 is what Lincoln County gets. And again, that's all based on the number of structures you have in your county, you know, compared to everybody else, and it's all divvied up by a calculation the state uses, so.
Terry, I'll mention that I think we were one of the first counties that got our, our study in, if I recall, so.
Well, I, I know that there was a struggle early on because I think counties were, were kind of scrambling on what to do.
To do with it, yes.
So.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Terry. Is there any public comment on this? Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Aaron's, is there a second?
Second.
By Schmidt? Is there any discussion by the commission? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried.
Next item I have, I'm looking for board action to request bids for the 2024 annual supply bids for the highway department. We'll be looking for, and again, the following items, concrete products, crushed concrete, cutting edges, fuel, mag water or mag chloride, plant-mixed asphalt materials, quartzite riprap, rock salt, and the transportation and weed chemicals, so. We will be advertising this the weeks of January 29th and the week of February 5th. Bids must be submitted by 4:00 PM February 15th to my office. We'll be opening bids on the 16th at 9:00 AM. And again, all this will be posted on the website once the, we get approval to move forward.
Okay, any public input on this? If not, do we?
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Aaron's, second by Landine to approve. Any discussion? Not? Kristen?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Next item I have is board action to approve a recommendation of the highway superintendent to set the 2024 spring load limits. And this is what they'll be, they'll be on this map here.
Are there any changes to, from previous year?
No. No changes from last year.
All right. Public input? None? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Landine, second by Aaron's. Any other discussion? If not, go ahead, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried.
Next item I have is board action to authorize the chair to sign a letter requesting assistance from the South Dakota Carrier Enforcement for the enforcement of load limits in Lincoln County. Basically, this is a, a letter that we have, you, the commission sign off on every year. And then we send it out to carrier enforcement, requesting assistance, their assistance in helping patrol, enforce our load limits.
Okay, any public input? If not, I guess?
Moved to approve.
The second.
Motion by Aaron's, second by Landine. Any discussion? Not? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Next item I have for you is board action to request bids for a 2024 micro-surfacing project for Lincoln County. We'll be doing about 14 miles this year. They'll be located on Lincoln County, County Road 106 up north, 271st Street, County Road 110 up north, east of Harrisburg, County Road 123 at Cliff Avenue, and then County Road 113, which is the airport road.
Public input?
We'll be publishing.
Oh, I'm sorry, Terry.
Publishing for the advertisement for this, the weeks of February 5th and February 12th, and we'll be opening the bids on February 21st at 10:30.
Okay, now, public input? If not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Aaron's, second by Landine. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Last item I have for you today is request board action to request bids for the 2024 Lincoln County surfacing project. So this year, we'll be doing about eight and a half miles. Basically, we're going to be doing a one-inch cold mill and a two-inch asphalt overlay on these roads. And that's going to be County Road 110 from Minnesota Avenue or State 115 over to County Road 111 or 469. We'll be doing County Road 117, we'll be doing two miles of that from the roundabout south down to 110. And then we'll be doing County Road 111 or 469th Street, basically north of Harrisburg up to 57th Street, so.
Okay.
And again, on these as well, publishing these February 5th, the weeks of February 5th and February 12th, opening the bids on February 21st at 10:30 AM.
Approximately, how many miles is it?
About, it's almost, it's almost nine miles we're doing. Yep.
Public input?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Aaron's, second by Landine to approve. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Tracy?
Good morning, commissioners. For my next item, I would move to go to executive session under SDCL 125-2, subpar 1.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Um, I understand the request. Is there anything else we can do outside executive session before that? Just in terms of economy of time? Or do both of those need to be done?
I think for clarity for both of those, those would be, it would be best to be put in executive session.
Okay.
Can I answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Any other?
I would, I would suggest, Mr. Chair, that we lump those in with any other executive session so we can get our public comment and commissioner reports and all that stuff out of the way.
Okay. Okay, any, any other questions for Tracy? Any other public input? Okay. Again, we need a motion, correct, or not?
Well, do you want to, if we're going to discuss those things in executive session, do you want to do our opportunity for public comment first? And then take commissioner reports?
Okay. Public comment on item 12? And also on 13, correct? Is that what you're saying, madam?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if we're going to go into executive session on those, maybe just bump up the public comment and the commissioner reports in front of those.
Okay.
Which I think was Commissioner Aaron's intent.
Okay.
It is, it is, Commissioner.
Okay, all right. Do we, do we need a motion to do that or not? No?
No.
No, we don't have to, do we?
Discretion.
Okay, all right. I guess at this time, let's, any opportunity for public comment? Those that can address non-agenda items that we've, have on the agenda for today, so.
Good morning, Commission. Jason, been on top, 277-45481st Avenue. I'm here today representing Dayton Township. I spoke with CO2 Committee, I think one of the first or second meetings I had. Basically expressed to them that we're in the process of adopting an ordinance for Dayton Township. And so, you may or may not know that, but as of January 17th, we recorded that with the auditor. I have copies here, if you wish to have one. If not, I won't take any more of your time. I just felt the need to be upfront and tell you what we did, so.
Like copy, Jerry.
Yeah. Do you have copy for everyone or not?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Give us all one then, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Come on in again.
Thank you.
All right. Jason, I have a question. I have one quick question. Jason, does this, this pass, which you passed, is that similar to what the planning and zoning board is going to be evaluating? You know, that came out of the ad hoc committee?
I suppose there's bits and pieces of it that probably resembles it. Our setback ordinance is basically taken from Navigator's Plume Study. Other than that, it was kind of what we felt was necessary for the people of Dayton Township. So, I guess that's.
Okay.
In a nutshell, it's, it's short and sweet, to the point, and I think it's pretty easily understood, so.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, I got a question. I see in the fee box, there's no fee. And according to Commissioner Landine's motion, we're going to be, we remanded that to consider a fee. What did you all settle on for your fee?
I believe it's, well, I think $20,000.
Okay. I don't know if you know this, your box, your, your line is still open, yeah?
Yeah, well, I think the one that's recorded is, it's written in there. I didn't have the, the one, recorded one with me, so I just printed this out.
So it was $20,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other public comment at this time for non-agenda items? Okay, none? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the highway department for all the work they did in getting the highways cleaned up over the last couple of weeks. It's typical South Dakota and starting to get cold here in January. And I noticed on Kellaland News, they did a story about our highway department plowing a driveway for a pregnant lady so she could get to the hospital and deliver her baby. So I want to thank the highway department and the sheriff's department for working together to help that lady out. Appreciate it. Appreciate their work.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Any other commissioners have anything to report? Well, that being said, I guess we're going to go into executive session under item, which one, Drew, one, two, or three? Under one? Okay.
And sub four.
And, okay. One and, what was that?
I've moved to go into executive session under SDCL 125-2, sub one and sub four.
Is that pending litigation and/or contract negotiation?
Correct.
Then I, I, thank you.
Okay, all right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Obviously, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Come out of executive session.
So moved.
A motion by Landine, a second by?
Schmidt.
Schmidt? Go ahead, call the roll then.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Okay. Next.
Okay.
Tracy.
Commissioners, Tracy Humphrey, HR Director, I'm asking for you all to approve a one-time additional administrative leave pay for non-emergency staff affected on January 12, 2024. We had seven, non-emergency staff that were required to work, report to work that day. So we're asking for you to approve administrative leave for those hours worked.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Are you going to ask for public input on that?
Yes, public input, please, on, on that. Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. Next.
All right, my additional item is for board discussion and action on adjusting the commission administrative. commission administrative officer step. So the requested action is to approve Stephen Rasmussen as the commission administrative officer, um, to move him from a grade one eighteen step two to a grade one eighteen step six, um, with, and as a result of his annual evaluation and in consideration of his public service. Um, I've been asked to bring this to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second.
Journey.
Public in, on public input? Seeing none? Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Sorry, was that Aaron's and Poppins?
Yes. And, excuse me, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
I'm gonna vote yes, but I want to make a statement that I do this with the idea that I want to present, or the commission is trying to present, a unified front for